I will call the meeting to order. First order of business is pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you're able and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to speak of something not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I will move on. Owen, my friend, you had asked that we put our student showcase on about the student council and what they're doing for the holidays. Mr. Brandigan sends his regrets. He was hoping to be here today and talk to you, but I'm going to turn it over to you, Owen, if that's okay, and you can talk to us.
I would just like to introduce Student Council President Heidi Cretian, Vice President Shannon Hurley, and Publicity Coordinator Chris Kogan to really break down the events we have going on this holiday season. Thank you, guys.
So first of all, we'd like to start off by saying thank you for this opportunity. Student council is always trying to reach out to the community, and we thought that this would be a perfect time to share what we've been up to and just all the great things that are going on at our school. So, one of the big things about the holiday season is giving back to the community. So, we're going to be sharing out some of the service projects we're doing this upcoming season. So, what we've been working on lately is Sajem Santas is what we call it, and we put up posters and some publicizing around the school to reach out and ask for the students around the school to maybe think about the students who are, and the families around the community that are less fortunate and may not be able to afford presents this year. So, what they can do is they can sign up and offer to bring in a gift, and we collected all the gifts that they gave this year, and we are donating them to the St. Vincent de Paul Food Pantry to distribute. And that was one of the first projects we did. Along the similar lines, we decided to do the Holiday Helpers this year. It's a little bit different from the Sajem Santas in the sense that each class takes on a family and kind of sponsors them for the holiday season. We worked with Middleborough U softball over at the Field of Dreams and got four trees donated this year. And we collected some lights and some decorations to give to the trees as well in case families wanted that option as well. And the classes worked really hard to communicate with the peers in each class to donate a hundred dollars from each class to give. And what we did with that is we got Visa gift cards so that way families could buy, whether it be food that they need or anything else, like some tablecloths, cutlery, things like that. So that way, they can really just make sure that they have the holiday season that they might not be able to afford this year. And then, we also have what we call the MHS Holiday Party, where each year, we invite the Conway House and families that may not be in the best financial situation to come in with their children and enjoy a fun evening of activities and have a dinner. And so, each year, we bring in Santa Claus, and it's a really fun event. I know last year, I talked to all the students who came, and it's just, it's really fun for us, as much as it is for the kids. So, we also have the annual holiday food drive. So, we collect a bunch of cans and non-perishables to donate to St. Vincent de Paul. Owen Kidd, he's a freshman. He really took this on, and he worked with Project 351 and took charge and embraced the season of giving. And right now, we have a ton of cans and food goods to give to the food pantry, so we're really excited about that. And then, we also have our second annual 12 Days of Giving. So, we encourage people to look around and connect with their peers and faculty in the community. And like, every day is donating, like, used to give kindness or give back to the community. So, tomorrow, we're going to kick off the weekend with a hashtag. That's MHS Season of Giving. So, over the weekend, we have opportunities for students to come and volunteer different places so that they can give back, and then they can post about it with the hashtag, and then we'll see it and repost it on our social media.
And for the upcoming week before vacation, we're going to have the Winter Spirit Week before Christmas Vacation. It's going to be all Christmas-themed days, and the moral of the week is just to get people excited for Christmas coming up and stuff like that, and just kind of get everyone in the holiday season, get everyone ready for your vacation. And for social media around the school, we've just been keeping up posters and stuff like that. We have Middleborough StuCo Instagram accounts, Twitter accounts, and just basic word-of-mouth with students, just kind of getting everyone in the holiday mood.
We thank you guys for everything that you do. And we know that this doesn't just happen at holiday time, especially for student council. You guys do it over and over throughout the year. Can I ask a question? Is there any way, is there anything that you're looking for that the community itself can get involved with and maybe help you out with? Either the food drive or anything like that, that we can encourage them to call Mr. Brandigan's office or if people have something to donate?
So, there has been some posts on like, the parents of Middleborough and things like that. Unfortunately, the food drive that we're doing at the school and like, the toy drive and everything is coming to a close tomorrow. So, if parents have the opportunity tonight, they can still go out and get gifts and everything. But this weekend, from 8:00 PM until 3:00 PM on Saturday, we're going to be going to St. Vincent's and helping organize all the donations we've gotten and that they've gotten through other organizations as well. And then, on Sunday, is it noon to 3 o'clock? Yeah, so noon to 3 o'clock, there'll be the opportunity to hand out the gifts to the children and the food to families who need it. If community members want to get involved, that way, they can reach out to either Mr. Brandigan about more information on that, or the St. Vincent de Paul Food Pantry itself. And if they want to continue the giving, to just contact the food pantry directly.
Through you, Mr. Young.
Please.
Any family wants to attend the gathering? How do they get involved in that? How do they, do they sign up for that? Do they make a reservation to for that?
For the food pan-
Do you have families in for a dinner?
Yes, so, we've been in contact with the Conway House and talking to them through that way. We were working this year as well. Mrs. McManus has recently joined School on Wheels. So, we've reached out to her as well to talk about maybe the addition of some new families because we always have a great turnout of the underclassmen bringing in a lot of food and a lot of hands, because like I said, it's a really fun event for the students as well to give back. So, we've reached out to some more additional families. But if any families would be interested in coming, you would have to talk to Mr. Brandigan to get the approval to come.
So, to reach out to Mr. Brandigan, it would be P. Brandigan at middleborough.k12.ma.us. So, anyone out there who's interested in doing that, that'd be great. Thank you.
And any member of student council who's interested in going. They can just talk to any executive board member and just let us know they're coming.
So, Mr. Young, this is, Mr. Chair, this is between AP classes and honors classes and sports and everything else these guys do on a day-to-day basis at school. They're doing all this work, so they're to be commended and applauded. The student council always steps up, and especially this time of year, it seems, each year. So, congratulations to all of them.
So, we thank you guys for coming, and Owen, we thank you for coming up with the idea. I think the only thing that maybe we should do is try to do this earlier next time. And so, that way, if people, you know, like you said, something's closed tomorrow, so that way, we can try to get more buy-in from the community in a whole and go from there. Mr. Oakley, I saw your name.
Yeah, I was just going to echo what Mr. Lynch said. That's incredible you guys can fit all this in. I don't know how you do all that. But if you, I heard some trees, some lights and decorations, some gifts, some food. If you could give kind of a rough number of everything you've collected about how many families you might be hoping to impact this season? Do you have like, a rough number of that?
So, I know right now, we haven't actually counted the donations because we usually do that on the final day because we all are, we all are high school students, so of course, we all wait to the last minute. So, we do get, we do get a lot of, a final push on that last day of students bringing in things. So, we usually wait to do the count until then. But I know right now, we have about two shopping carts full of food. We have some gifts up in the main office, which I'd say we probably had about, what, 15? Around 15 to give to the children. As well as the children who come to the holiday party will each be receiving a personal gift. And we do more of the sponsorship of four families getting the complete total package.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate everything that you do.
It's great.
Thank you guys for having us and all the support.
And again, thank you, Owen, for setting this up for us tonight. And Owen, I'll turn it over to you for your report.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the school committee members for coming out and shining a light on what we do the holiday season. So, the fall sports season was officially capped off at the Fall Sports Banquet last Wednesday. All varsity and sub-varsity athletes at both the high school and the middle school were recognized in a great night with awards and accommodations. The Key Club's Annual Eat to Heat also held last Wednesday, went phenomenally, raising hundreds of dollars to benefit heating costs for those who need this winter. Thank you to the entire Middleborough community for their support and to the Key Club for organizing and putting on such a great event. Last night was the annual holiday concert from the music department. Guests were able to see great performances from the band orchestra, Sajem singers, and concert choir. Thank you to them and their teachers for their diligent work all year to prepare for this concert. Brandon Hogan was recognized as a nominee for the 2019 Autogram Award for his excellence in football. Congratulations to him. The Speech and Theater Workshop has a holiday coffee house tonight in the Black Box. And tomorrow, they're taking a field trip to Boston to see a show. The GSA has their annual holiday party next Wednesday, December 19th, from 2:30 to 3:30 in the Black Box, and all students are welcome to attend that. And finally, the American Legion Oratorical Contest in January is open to any student. The competition regards speaking about the Constitution and its significance. Any interested students should see Mr. Brandigan. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen. Any questions for Owen? Owen, have a very nice holiday season, and we thank you for everything that you do. Any members of the school committee have anything they want to bring up? Megan.
So, I went to Beauty and the Beast this weekend here at Nichols, and I just want to say it was a great production. So, thank you to all the teachers and staff that worked on that, and bravo to all of the students that were in it. It was very good.
Yeah, also, my daughter was in Beauty and the Beast, and it was a really nice show, so thank you to the Nichols Middle School Arts Department for that. And I also went to the holiday concert. My middle daughter's in the band, the high school band, and it was a great show. You know, very, the four or five different groups were playing, so it was really nice. They also announced they're starting a community band, which I'm excited about. So, my clarinet that's been sitting in my closet is going to get the dustblown off of it. I think there's an informational meeting in January 22nd, I believe, at the high school. And then, they start rehearsals in February. I don't have the information. I think it's like, the second and fourth Tuesdays or something. I think you can go online to find out. So, if anybody's interested in joining a community, a brand-new community band, they're starting one up in February.
And through you, Mr. Chair, they can get in touch with Justin Pittsley, who's our high school music coordinator. And I would also add that if you get your chops back and people start playing those instruments again, there's always room in the Middleborough Chowder and Marching Society for the Fourth of July Parade. And you don't have to march. All you have to do is sit and play if you'd like. So, on the back of a float, some of us do still march, though. Thank you.
Piggyback onto the, the concerts last night was, it was just phenomenal. That second string piece was just unbelievable. I just, moving, moving piece. I went up, I had to say something to Justin about it because my son's in the band, not in the string piece, and that second string arrangement was just beautiful. But, we need to get more kids in there. And I'd love to see that fourth grade music program brought. I just, I see it as the numbers get smaller at the high school. If we could get the students in it a little earlier, maybe. I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out a way to do that because that would be just amazing to see those numbers start to swell again on that stage where we need a bigger stage.
They announced there's 85 students going to DC for their community, for their concert band festival, so that's a pretty good achievement.
The only thing that I wanted to mention to everyone was this, that the, although we're, soon enough, we'll hit break. There is no break for those athletes playing winter sports. And so, please check out the Middleborough website because it lists all the games that go on during the winter especially. And if you're around with family, it's a great way to stop by. And, right, and also, if you have, if you bought the MS, Masba, the card, you can get into games free. But, you know, it's a, it's a great time. Those kids still work their butts off, especially during break. And there's basketball games and hockey games and everything else. And so, please come by and watch one or two and enjoy yourself, especially if you're around this, the holiday week.
Mr. Chair, while we're still talking about recognition, recognition of students, I wanted to mention that our athletic director, Ryan Sylvia, is going down to attend the National Association of Athletic Directors meeting. And he has a special, special assignment this year because last year, in our school, we had a student who was a remarkable student athlete and who was recognized in the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts as being the best student athlete of the state. He then went into a sort of a national, a regional group, and he became the Regional Student Athlete of the Year. He was then put in with all the regions from throughout the country, and he was named the top student athlete in the country last year for the Athletic Directors Association. So, congratulations to Evan Gavush. He is down in San Antonio with his family. His family's with him. He's going to receive a very large scholarship through this process, but that's not why he did it. He was nominated. He actually did nominate himself, which is typical of Evan, very humble. And he was somebody that was recognized. He will read his speech at the final presidential conference. And congratulations to Evan, congratulations to his family. He brings honor to himself, his family, his town, and the Middleborough Public Schools. So, although he's currently dual-enrolled in MIT and Harvard, he still is representing Middleborough High School and Middleborough Public Schools. So, congratulations to Evan. Thank you.
Anybody else? Frank, I'll turn it over to you, my friend.
Good evening. I'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday season. Teachers are looking forward to having some time off, one week and one day. I think up at the high school, Mr. Michael says it's five days and a wake-up. Something like that, and then, he's all ready to have his vacation, I think, so. Looking forward to starting the training for interest-based bargaining for negotiations. I think that there's a lot of promise in that, so, other than that. And everything? Anybody have any questions?
A couple of very nice meetings to start off a negotiation, so I also look forward to interest-based bargaining. And we met with Doreen, and she seemed very personable, and I think will be a very big help. So, thank you. Thank you for recommending that to us. Next up on the agenda is superintendent's report.
Chair, members of the committee, members of the audience. We have a couple of reports that involve Ms. Sarah Hickey, our new Director of Finance and Business for the district. And she's going to start off with an FY20 budget update in terms of where we are in the planning processes.
So, at this point, the budget detail sheets will be going out to principals and directors before the holiday break. And I'm still in the process of learning and doing all at the same time. So, it's been very exciting as I'm discovering things that I should have known about, but I couldn't have known about. So, it's just been an interesting couple of weeks for me, and it'll just keep going this way for an entire year or so, or more, I hear.
But she is working with an excellent mentor and working alongside her and working alongside the folks in the office who are helping out and finding secret passwords to files, not secret, but coded passwords to files and detail sheets that I didn't realize existed. So, we're learning a lot as we move along here, so.
I am very fortunate that my predecessor was a very well-organized woman, and everything is in a digital file or in a filing cabinet. And part of the excitement for me is finding things after I learned that it's something that exists that I need. So, once I find that something exists, then I can know where to start hunting.
So, it seems like you've had three months of Christmas. Every day, you open up another drawer and decide something new? It's like opening another present?
Sort of, yes. Yes.
Next on my report is the longitudinal enrollment data. I'm sorry.
And so, probably at one of our meetings in January, we'll outline the process for the school committee. The budget committee will be meeting, but more importantly, when the budget hearing is, that we have to have by law. And obviously, we'll conform to the town's request of us. But we'll, when we hit January, we'll probably let everyone know about what the budget hearing date's going to be. So, thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, we'll also know at that point, in terms of some of the grants we receive, that might be sunsetted, and some of those things that will impact this budget. Hopefully, we'll get some numbers for Title I and Title II-A and all those things so we can work with those items outside of the operational budget as well as those sides within, those pieces within the organization or the operational budget, so. Ms. Hickey has also done some work on the longitudinal enrollment data that we talked about at the last meeting. And you should have a chart before you, and she'll explain.
So, if you look at the side of the paper that says Middleborough Public Schools' longitudinal enrollment data, we, part of our conversation at the last meeting, we talked about the high school building project and the number of students we could have at the high school. And we talked about the, certifying the enrollment for the district. So, those two things led into this conversation. So, what I've produced for you is a graph, and there are three different lines on the graph. The black line is from a NESDEC study, the New England School Development. I can't remember what the E and C stand, well, the C is council. They had done an enrollment study many years ago for Middleborough, and I inherited their predictions of enrollment data. And the orange line is the enrollment from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And the gray line is the MSBA, the Mass School Building Authority's enrollment projections for us. And I'm pretty good with numbers. I don't know why they're all different. You can see that in 2006, you have three distinct numbers, so everybody has their own formula. But I like to look at the orange data because that's who was enrolled. That's our actual enrollment. And so, what we had talked about at the last meeting is everybody thought the enrollment for Middleborough was going down and was going to trend down and stay trending down. But if you look at the 2018, FY2018 and FY2019 data, we're actually going back up. And there was a glitch in, was that the 2017?
Seventeen, yeah.
There was an error in reporting to the state, and that number should actually be higher. So, if that number were correct, you would see that there's a leveling off. And it looks like the, you know, as a statistician, you wouldn't want to say, "Okay, three years is telling us we're going to have this big up-sweep in population." But we're, it looks like we might be having that. If you flip the page, the same data for just Middleborough High School. So, the black line is the NESDEC study. The red line is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And the gray line is the Mass School Building Authority enrollment projections. So, again, you can see the same thing trending for just the high school enrollment, that we have an uptick in the enrollment at the high school when we were predicted to continue on a downward trend up through 2026.
You know, it's funny, I've been on the board since 2011. We've always talked about this year's freshman class hitting the high school this year was our big year. That was that big class that was coming through. We were watching it. They were the 247, 240, you know, coming through middle school. We always knew they were the biggest class. In fact, I think we rolled a teacher in elementary at one point in time because we had so many kids in that class, that grade, that cohort. And I do worry about the numbers because of also the construction that's ongoing, planning, and permitted, et cetera. So, when we start talking about our school choice information, which we do each year, we may want to take a deep breath, look at the numbers before we open it wider because we own, we own our kids if they come into our district unless they choose to go elsewhere. But, and I have no problem with that. I just, I don't want to also open it wider, and then, all of a sudden, we're at 1,000 kids in an 800-school. So, but this is not a surprising piece of data. I like the data. I'm a data person as well, and I saw that. And it's not surprising at all because we, I always talked about the 3,700 for the entire school, which was our big number back in mid-2000s. And then, ever since I've been on, it's been a declining enrollment. And I used to talk about declining enrollment and declining enrollment, and it wasn't a problem. It was just, it was an acknowledgement that we were losing, you know, 50, 75, 100 a year. And, you know, as we do that, we have to make sure. That's why our classroom sizes got, it was wonderful. We added a teacher here, and then, all of a sudden, we were at 20 in the elementary or below. So, I just, if we got a, we see this happening now, that blip, we just got to keep an eye on the blip to make sure we don't put too many more kids into the system. But, one here, one there, doesn't really, shouldn't really make a huge difference. But if all of a sudden, we had 15 show up January 1st, it's tough to make a move. But thank you for this data, it was great data. It's great to see this in number and line format.
But, you know, my mind, the other piece that should be pointed out, too, is the uptick that we're seeing in both, especially in the high school, is the time in which we opened the school up for choice. You know, and so, I think the numbers that we've, right, the numbers that we've had increasing choice add to that, obviously. But, you know, and that's some of it, too. So, I think, you know, it isn't, you know, I mean, if you're taking away the kids that we have to choice, the numbers are not as dramatic, but we-
But it's still, Mr. Chair, it's still an uptick. And I think that that's important. I think it also coincides with the positive feelings and the positive vote for a new high school. And there are folks who are moving to town. There's a lot of building going on. Over 100 homes will have, single families will have been built in the calendar year 2018 in this town. And there continues to be not enough permits to go around at this point, so there's still-
Say, even last night, I saw people, I saw parents in that concert at the high school that I know their kids didn't go to Middleborough Schools up until high school. I know where they went. I had the conversations with these people. And I didn't even realize that their kids had started at Middleborough. They brought their kids back to Middleborough High School. It's a trend. I think it's a great trend. The only thing I'm wondering is, is we've always been in that, as the downward swing, that whole harmless area with the state budget? Is this upswing going to help us with a little bit more money? Or is it, we're going to still kind of be coming out of that whole harmless area? I don't know. That answer is something to think about, look into, maybe? Right.
As we get more students, that's also the point that Mr. Cuttino brought forward to us, that we need a review of the foundation budget, too, which is the foundation budget based on an arcane development that hasn't changed over time and needs to change. And I agree.
If there are no other questions on longitudinal enrollment, we're going to move on to the school calendar. Again, this is, this is your decision. You can certainly, this, I sent it to you. We've talked about different options. I've told you, explained to you what the administrators felt in terms of that mid-break. We can certainly look at this one more time, the sooner the better in terms of making a decision on this. But this is 1920. I know that Ms. Gagnon sent along the 2021 to you in the form of an email separate from this. So, we'd have a chance to begin discussions about that. But this is focused on the 1920 school year, so.
So, the chair is interested in how the board feels? Any questions about, great?
I like the way it looks, but I know that you both have had conversations with the administration. Are the administrators happy with this and the way it fits in the testing and what they plan on doing?
Assistant with what they would like to see, yes. Assistant with, with what they would like to see, yes.
That was their recommendation. But a month ago, and this is their recommendation to the two of us.
Just one question, so the last day, the June 19th, 2020, that has already five snow days accounted for in that, or is that, or is that 180?
That should be 180.
That is 180, okay.
We could certainly count those up, the, the numbers are listed in the, in the boxes along the side, so.
180.
It is 180, okay.
The last day of school, that 19th is a 180.
All right, 'cause I know some years we had a-
Should be 184.
Yeah, that we had the five-day snow days built in. So it only gives us one, two, seven, and there's, you can't go into July, right?
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll jump off that bridge there.
All right.
Well, this is a mild winter.
Yeah.
Okay. It's been a long time before, since we've had more than five or six.
Plus, we have a superintendent that doesn't take school off.
It's the day after the Super Bowl.
Day off, oh.
That is, strangely, the two of the past three years, I think that has, that has happened, so. And Owen, being a senior, would like as many snow days as possible because he doesn't have to make them up.
Appropriate to move on this at this time? I would love to make, make the motion that we approve the Option 1, 2019, 2020 school calendar as presented this evening.
Do I a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Great.
I just, you know, in case, Hallmark, seeing this, but, you know, we're doing the, the two days before Christmas, Wednesdays of Christmas, so we're doing two days before is the break, all the way through New Year's Day, and then there's a Thursday, Friday, back at school on the second and third. And I think that's a good choice, because I don't wanna see this last day get too close to the end of June, because then you run out of wiggle room. So I like the way it looks.
Students will be coming back, the students will be coming back to school the Tuesday after Labor Day, not before, in this calendar. The teachers will be coming back for three days of professional development, and those who, those athletes will be practicing anyway for the weeks before that.
Right. Yeah, and we'll note that again on this calendar, I believe it is noted?
It is.
Yes. Yep, yep. And the new teacher orientation is noted, so that any teacher that's hired will understand that that's a condition for their employment, so.
Any other comment? The chair does wanna make a comment that while I agree with this calendar, the following year's calendar cannot, a lot of these things cannot happen based on what's going on in the school system.
Yeah, there'll be some restructuring.
Yeah, more than likely, we will have to start prior to Labor Day. Because Labor Day falls at the last possible date it possibly can, and on top of that, if all goes according to plan, we will have a new high school opening the January after, in the middle of that year. So there's gonna have to be some changes to that calendar, and I just want people to know ahead of time. And as we've talked about at our meeting, we will try to establish that calendar as, as soon as we possibly can in the year next year to allow parents and families to make decisions on their vacations and lives. Yes, my friend?
Mr. Chair? I'm gonna throw a monkey wrench in on this one right now, but can we check with Allison as to when the presidential primary date in March of 2020 will be? That could be a busy day. There's a presidential primary in March, I believe, of 2020. I didn't even think of that until just now, I just looked at it because I was thinking of November of 2020 and the primary.
Beyond year would not be, you know, a two- or a four-year term, but however, you're right, Brian, and I think that maybe if the, if the chair and the school committee so desire tonight, you could vote on it conditional upon that. We could always float that January 17th, which is the Friday, before Martin Luther King Weekend, we could float that day to the primary date, and if you, if you'd like, if we can determine the day of the primary. And I met with Allison Tuesday afternoon, and that's a question that did not come up, and that's a very good question. March primary.
Hold on a second. I'm about to-
Yeah, 'cause on the election years, we, that's what we do with that holiday, that PD.
And the following year, as you started to mention, the 2020, 2021, we're looking at a presidential election also, and a primary.
Tuesday, March 3rd. Yeah. It looks like March 3rd. You're right.
Is that?
Is the date.
Mr. Chair, if we were to consider, I'd swap the 17 full day for the 3rd, and then swap out the 20th, early release PD back to the 17th, which we've done in the past, trying to line up on those.
So the question I have for everybody is this, do you wanna vote on it tonight, or just wait until January, I mean, you know, we could have a couple of weeks, look at it, and then come back in January?
Let's wait and touch base with Allison one more time?
Yeah, we're gonna clear, close with Allison and go from there.
I just, I just thought of that.
Richard?
Can you repeat that? I just wanted to follow you on the, on the-
The presidential primary occurs in Mar, on March 3rd of 2020, which could be a substantial turnout, as we've seen in the past, it could be a substantial turnout, and on those days, since three precincts happen at the high school, sometimes we don't wanna, not to mention the construction's gonna be going on at the high school, there's gonna be a limited parking, so there's a lot of things going on, we may wanna consider not having school that day, do training, and even, maybe even off-site training, if that's the case, if necessary, to free up parking for that. So I was thinking November, I wasn't even thinking about March until just, when I looked at the March, and I said, oh, there's only one early release day in March, and then I thought, primary.
As we did on Election Day with professional development, this year, all of the secondary folks came here for the professional development, so we're able to clear the parking lots, and we're gonna be down most of a parking lot as we phase to the new building, so.
So if anyone has objection, the chair will not take a vote on this until-
Will we withdraw my motion?
That would be great, if everyone could withdraw their motions, and we'll do it in January at our first meeting, okay? Not to reject.
So we'll have it on the agenda for the next meeting. In the meantime, either myself or you and I can, or someone can, will talk to Allison and meet with her to confirm March 3rd. There's also the, the conversation I've had with her down the road is that with redistricting and with the town's population continuing to rise, that we may get another precinct, and she may be looking for an additional polling place.
And the conversation with Allison has been this will be the polling place, the Nichols. The Nichols will be the polling place.
This may be an additional polling place, possibility.
Because you have to have a place that makes sense parking-wise, and also makes sense, so. But again, if we're following the process that we have, in which we've not held, you know, school during Election Day, it doesn't-
Yeah, I was just thinking, you end up with a primary in September, and then a general in November. The November one, I can see because that's the big turnout, but we're getting big turnouts all the time now.
This was all of a sudden in 2020. So this would not be a conversation in 2022, and that would, to me, would be, as far as I'm concerned, a school committee approval for, for use of school buildings, so we could certainly talk about that long before that.
Quitting the 7th precinct in, back in 2010 to 2012, Eileen Gates and I met many times, and the, the answer was, because she looked at Oak Point, and they, they like to keep them under 4,000 people per precinct, but the state said no, and they refused to let her do that, because, and she knew the numbers where they were gonna appear, and they appeared right where she said they would. Eileen had a pretty good handle on those numbers, and as does Allison, so. So, and with almost 17,500 registered voters right now, a lot of precincts. Excellent.
All right, we'll move on to the next meeting.
All right, Mr. Chair, the final item on my report is obsolete equipment, and Ellen just called from the Technology Department, sent over a list in November with a number of different items on it. Had a discussion with Ms. Hickey here next to me, and we discussed sitting down with her to go through the list, to determine that none of this material, none of these materials could be used at the elementary level, where there's a squeeze for technology, and checking and double-checking, and Sarah was, was satisfied with all the explanations from Ellen. The list was pared a little bit, and this is the recommended list for approval for obsolete equipment, which is an action item, so.
I would move that we declare the November 21st, 2018 Technology Department obsolete equipment list as surplus.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing, now, anyone in the audience have any questions? Mr. Oak?
Declaring it as surplus, does that mean just what it sounds like? We're, we're just gonna get, get rid of it?
We have a process for it. So depending what happens, it would- What usually happens is this, anything that we declare surplus, we ask the town first.
School committee policy dictates.
If anyone wants it. And then there's a determination made whether or not it's, it could be available to the public, either in the past, we've used auctions, those kind of things. It sounds like these are, oh, essentially paperweights.
But if there's a group, interested group of people who are really into technology and such, who could piecemeal some things together, they could certainly take the pile before it goes anywhere to be disposed of, and pick through it.
If the, if some of the, I see that there's some laptops in here, if, if those laptops could be repaired, is there a way that we could find out if there are some families in, in town that might not have a computer at home that might benefit from those, something like that?
Well, the determination for this set of equipment is that those are beyond affordable repair, that you would spend more on fixing them than you might from buying a new one.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that would be probably paying a company to try to fix them, is that, so, so there'd be some labor involved that, yeah?
Yeah, we have a technology department that, that sits down and looks through each of these pieces of equipment, and makes the determination as to, and they're, they're tech people, and very good at what they do, and if it needs a screen, or if it needs a motherboard, or if it needs something like that, it's, it's beyond that, so. But if there's a group that thinks that they can maybe piece a few of these together to get a working one or two for projects that might not require as much memory, or even just day-to-day use, so, yeah.
When, when will be the, the opportunity to, to, to speak up about those? Is it right now, or?
Well, if the vote is approved tonight, then these are offered to anyone in the town, through the town manager and through all the departments. And if nobody puts in for it, for, I'll use the example of, we've had a couple of trucks that we've determined to be obsolete. One, the Park Department grabbed, because they had a very similar truck, and they wanted to use it for parts before it went to science for surplus or trash. And a second one that nobody wanted, and so that will go for scrap iron or scrap steel. And so those are the stories of two trucks. This would be a different story, this is going to the town saying, does anybody want any of this stuff, anyone want, and if nobody says anything, then they become fodder. So at that point, they'd be available to anyone. Yep.
Hearing, now, the motion was to make that surplus, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Anything else, sir? Thank you very much. Next up on our agenda is MSBA, and I'm gonna turn it over to Brian for a little bit.
Mr. Chair, the, the new high school building project is officially out to bid today. So it's out to bid electronically available online, it's, they're doing all electronic processes. The filed sub-bids, there are 16 different filed sub-bids, from plumbing and electrical to terrazzo tile and elevators, there's 16 of them that, they, those filed sub-bids will be due on the 17th of January. The general contractor bid will be on the 31st of January, that'll be, we'll have a number at whatever, I think it's 12 o'clock, so at 12:01, we'll know. And then hopefully by February 15th, if all goes well, that we'll be able to award the contract, execute the contract, and sign a notice to proceed. The, the building committee, I think, is the awarding authority on it, so they will be the ones voting, so we gotta make sure we get our group together to get all that done, and that way there, we can get that awarded, and they can start construction as soon as possible.
In the 18th of August.
On, on a holiday nonetheless, President's Day, maybe they can get going on it. But weather permitting, hopefully, they'll be out there putting up fences in Clarence and Grubin, the, the property, getting the road and the lay-down area next to the existing track, and, and silt fence, and protecting all the wetland, et cetera, et cetera. So the project, I've, I've actually been reviewing the project since, since it went online at noon time, I actually downloaded a set of, I think it's 265 sheets of drawings, it's almost three volumes of thickness of, of documents, but I've been going through the drawings and looking at them, and they're pretty good, a couple of things I've, I picked up, but nothing, nothing substantial at all. So that's, I spent about two hours doing that today, going through drawings. But it's a great project, if you, if you get a chance, if you, if you look at it, it has actually, one of the big things is the phasing, when you start looking at the phasing of how they're gonna do it, and what parts of the school property that they'll be taking over to do their work. It's very interesting, I think there's seven sheets of that that show the phasing, which is pretty cool to see from this date to this date, they're intending to do this and that, and it really works out well. So it's kind of exciting time of year, exciting project, and hopefully, we'll get some great bids.
I just wanna point out to everybody, just 'cause I figured this out today, we started this process five years ago this month, so it has been a long, and at times, difficult process, but it has been very good, and the MSBA has been a great partner in that, so I thank them tremendously. So any other questions about the, Mr. Oak?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chief, that's exciting, real exciting. I, I don't know a ton about this process, and I was wondering if, I understand if we should probably do it offline if it would take longer, but I was just curious, so the, the bids for, it sounds like materials and kind of special stuff come in first, and then the general contractor, is that right, at the end of the month?
Yes. Mr. Chair, what happens is, the Commonwealth of Mass requires certain trades to do what's called a filed sub-bid. So if you have a company that does electrical work, a big company that does schoolwork, big commercial work, and you wanna put a bid in to work on this, this project, you look at the project, you put your number together, and you do what's called a filed sub-bid. In that filed sub-bid, it'll give you the, it gives the general contractor how much it's gonna cost to do the electrical work, and they just plug that into their bid. But what, what, what happens is sometimes the filed sub-bids, like an electrical contractor may not wanna work with that contractor, they'll exclude them, so it's, it's a whole process. So you have plumbers and masonry workers, and like I said, the terrazzo tile, the elevators, the sheet rock, the carpenters, all these different filed sub-bids that will come through that the state requires. So on January 17th, you'll, there'll be a list of 130 of those, and the different, the different bids. Now, the general contractor gets all of those, and they get to plug those into their bid, on top of civil site work and all the other stuff that isn't included as a filed sub-bid, and, and the other parts of it, the insurances and all that, that they have to do. That's why you, the, the general, the general contractor, everyone thinks, oh, the GC's doing all this work. I hate to say it, a lot of them don't get their hands dirty. I hate to say it that way, but a lot of them, they're really managing the project and hiring all the other people to do the work. I've seen some get their hands dirty, but mostly, they- I've seen some get their hands dirty, but mostly they run the project and they're really overseeing to make sure everything gets done and organizing it and scheduling and putting a thumb down on other people to make sure things get done. But yeah, it's the process, so everything's out to bid, so everyone's looking at documents right now. And then the filed sub bids will come in in January, middle of January, the two weeks later at the end of January, the general sub, the general four or so that we might get, we might get four bids. And hopefully we'll, it's an estimate for construction about 83. I'd love to see an 80 or 79 would be great, would be awesome, but I don't hold my breath 'cause steel steals the question right now, so, but we'll know January 31st, noontime, we'll see, we'll see those four numbers, they, since it's all electronic, everyone's filing it online and all they do is at 12:01, they push the button and it just spits out the information at us, says that's the number, that's the four numbers. Then, because there's a process of pre-qualification for these contractors as well, they've already been pre-qualified, we know who's qualified to do this work. So it's not like, okay, we got these four contractors, are they all qualified? That's all been taken care of already. Now it's, can they get a bond? Can they get insurance? You know, that type of thing, that, once that's all the bonding, the insurance, the performance bond, to make sure that they gotta pay their labor and their materials, all that stuff, when that's all put together, we, first thing we do, we award the contract, they do that paperwork, then we, we send a notice to proceed once everything's executed. So we have to award it, they get their paperwork done, they have, we could sort of get that done to us, and then we send them a notice to proceed. Once that's out there, they're working, I mean, money's rolling at that point.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we will move on. Yes.
Motion approved and consented agenda as presented this evening.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. As I said before, we're still working on school committee workshop and protocols, I'll be sending some dates out to people. And we're gonna talk a little about policy subcommittee now. So Megan and I met and with the superintendent and Sarah. We also involved Dr. Gates in the process. She helped with a lot of, and I should also mention Ann, and helped a lot with the process. And so what you see tonight is really three steps, if you will. So if no one objects, I'm gonna go with the easy steps first, okay? And the first easy step is, it says A, these are policies to be renewed and they're policy on students and student harassment, student records and relation with booster organizations. They're to be removed because either they're obsolete or we have another policy in play that meets their requirement. So if no one objects, we'd like to take a motion to, I just flat out remove them.
Motion to remove the three policies, JBA, JBA dash R and KJA as presented this evening.
Discussion. Makes sense to everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. I'm gonna ask you to flip over the page for one second. So underneath C on the top of the page, these are policies, just so everyone knows that I'm just gonna, I am not asking for three readings. And the readings, we're not asking for three readings are a couple of reasons. One is they're either a simple language piece that needed to be added to change the policy or, for example, number six is educational opportunities for military children and number seven is educational opportunities for children in foster care. Those are the law. So we do not have, we are currently operating under those premises. We've never sort of established a policy for them, so we did hear, but they, they're already ongoing by law. So there is nothing here that, for example, any member of the school committee could alter in any way, shape or form.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would move that we waive the three readings for the following policies, AC, AD, ADA, ADDA, ADDA dash R, JFABE and JFABF and KBE.
Second.
Discussion. Greg.
To, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, policy KBE with relations to parent organizations. It says that all parent organizations shall obtain 501(c)(3) status. Do our current boosters have that status or is that something they should be seeking to obtain somewhere?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's an excellent point. I believe we have one that does not currently. This policy would require that group to obtain that. If you wanted to alter that as a school committee, you certainly could. If you want to make this, put this into the three readings, exclude it from the larger group, or if you'd like to act on it as is, and we would need to encourage the groups that don't to get them.
I, and I was thinking the same thing when I, that Greg just mentioned, because like you have the band parents, they're not an official booster, but they really are a booster group. They would meet almost the definition of a booster group. Parents that do things for individual sports, that help out at individual sports, whether it's sending in items and all that, it's not like an official booster program and they're not advertising, but you know, if you're going out and getting a raffle item for something, you're out there saying, I'm getting it for the Middleborough High School Band or something, it kind of is a booster program at that point. So I thought the same thing and I'm like, eh, so might we wanna rethink that one? When I make the motion, I'll leave that one out for the three reading?
Certainly do that and I would also say that we could, we could obtain a list of folks who do not have it, the booster organizations that do not have it and why, and we could either exclude them through policy, through readings, or we could say that this is something that we would like to see and put in a time limit within five years, within three years of the adoption of this policy or something like that. Because it does take time, it does take money, there's an expense associated with it, so.
So this policy about the booster organizations, is that, that's a state law?
Well, what happens is it's a, it's a state piece that's sort of a MASC, MASC is asking that people sort of cover themselves from problems. One thing I would recommend that we could do, we could change the language to encourage all organizations, because I think the encouragement piece is important. And so I just throw that out there and again, we don't have to, you know, we can pull it off and do second and third reading. But these are, and you know, I'll be honest with you and I think everyone who's been around for a little while, and it was a little before my time, but Brian can attest to it, you know, sometimes you run into issues with organizations that have had some pretty sad consequences and I think they would be covered better if they were covered by a.
Nonprofit.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chair, one of the things I find ironic is MASC is saying we should be encouraging or requiring 501(c)(3), but the moment you do a 501(c)(3), it is against the constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for any 501(c)(3) to benefit at all from public entities. So in other words, we can't let anyone use our facilities if they're a 501(c)(3). Technically, we can't let them use it. For instance, we invite the Rotary to come in and do the auction. It's, it's, it was, actually town council has brought this to the selectmen. It is, it's in the constitution, was put in the 1850s specifically because of the church and state separation piece, but it has, it has stretched into 501(c)(3). It was reiterated back in 1926 and I believe in 1973. The 501(c)(3)'s are not allowed to generate any benefit whatsoever, because that's why we use the, we use the town hall for the summer constant series and any charitable group can't use a facility for free, so we pay a small nominal fee to use the facility. But it's one of those things, as we're encouraging them, we gotta be careful we don't turn around and go the other way. But as long as we invite, see if these groups, we can invite them to do things for us 'cause it benefits our kids, like the Rotary does so much, we invite them always to do our stuff with us.
I mean, I think also that, you know, it's, it's how we're, you know, part of it for me and I've seen and the superintendent knows this is, is there has to be a delineation between what's for the schools and what's for a program or somebody. And so I've in the past, superintendent and I have talked about this, we've had to go back to people and say, hey, you need to change the language of this because you're not raising money for America Good, you're raising money for your organization. Granted, it eventually goes to America Good, but it's not, you know, it's just not the way, you know, it can't be set up that way if we're not seeking those. So I think, why don't we pull that one off and have a better discussion with that?
All right, Mr. Chair, if I might, if, the way I, this was originally written was talking about parent-teacher organizations and that's how it was read originally. And if you look at the red on these papers, it was changed to include booster organizations and it was also added that shall obtain the 501(c)(3). So if you'd like, I could certainly send this through council for advisory and.
I'm not as worried about that, I just, we don't wanna cause a problem, that's all.
Yeah, I think we should find out who doesn't have a 503(c)(3) first and then look at what the options are, because it does make, it does make, I mean, I don't wanna hurt anybody, that's not the process. The process is just, as I said before, which is trying to make sure that the pieces that have been problematic and, you know, this is, these are the things that, you know, it's always been the outside organizations that have had some issues and they're also, it's protecting themselves. So no objections, I wanna remove that one and put that in our first reading. And so we'll take the input that you've all given us for our first reading and we'll include that in that discussion.
I think we have a motion on the waiving of the others though?
Yeah. Any further comment about the rest of them? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Now we are back to the first readings. Yes.
I would first, before we go back to the first reading, I would move that we approve the following policies, since we've waived the three readings, policy AC, AD, ADA, ADDA, ADDA dash R, JFAB and JFABF.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Now we'll, if people have particular questions about any of the, the first reading policies, we can go over those, if that makes sense to people. Just so everyone understands, and they're all, they're all related, they all have to do with the namings and honorings and memorials. We don't have a policy in place. Any, any school building under the control of the school committee, it's up to us to decide what's named and what's not named. The only decision we've made thus far, especially for the new building, is to continue with the tradition of the Wayne M. Karen Auditorium, who was a Medal of Honor winner in Vietnam. And we, we moved that primarily because some people had complained to us that we weren't gonna do that and it wasn't our intention at all and that's why I brought it up to the committee.
And Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
The Wayne M. Karen Auditorium, if you look at our policies and what it says, how you would name something, it absolutely falls into exactly that they were upstanding citizens and what they gave and the community, et cetera, et cetera. Just every piece of that screams that, so.
Congressional, through you, Mr. Chair, is a congressional Medal of Honor recipient.
There are 3,000 in the nation and we happen to have one, might have a second one. We, as it may be established, we only have one right now, but they're working on establishing the identity of the second one. They know the identity, they're just trying to establish the Middleborough piece of it because he entered the service in California and he is listed as, I believe, being born in Taunton, but he grew up in Middleborough, et cetera, so.
The fundamental piece that we wanna mention over and over again is I think the conversation that the group of us had was the single greatest way to honor somebody is to establish a scholarship, because we believe that helps more kids and puts kids, you know, on a path that allows them to grow and do well as they move on. And so a lot of this is around that, a lot of this we took from bits and pieces that we saw, so there were MASC, we are in the process of running it by our attorney, because we picked and chose various pieces. There's a couple of things that we, you know, there are things that we liked, like we liked the idea of if you're gonna name, for lack of better terms, a classroom, then it's a majority of the board, but if you're gonna name a building, then it has to be two-thirds majority of the board. You know, there were those pieces that, because it was, it was bigger and more important. We also liked the idea of holding a public hearing for any names. We also liked there to be a delay, and so people had time to reflect and see what, you know, people's impact. This is not in any way, shape or form to, to say we're not gonna do that. It's just a piece to establish a process, that's all.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would move that we declare the following policies having been read for, had their first reading, policy FA, FA dash E, FCB, FF, FF dash R, FFA, GBEBD, KBE, which we just added from the previous, the back page, and KDC.
Discussion. Any questions about those? The, the online fundraising solicitations and the crowdfunding were relatively new, but given that lots of places start to move to that online funding, we felt it was important and we established a policy about it. Any other questions? Again, so Mr. Oakley, I know you mentioned at the last meeting, there'll be two more readings. You all have the opportunity to put input each and every time. If there is something that you think about afterwards, just send Megan an iron note and we can begin the, we'll send it to everybody so everybody sees it and we can begin looking at it in that way. We'll come back. You may see these change, again, because we're running them by attorney and, you know, so you may see the pieces change. And so then in the final reading, they will become sort of the rule. Greg.
Can I, do we mark the changes? So those, if you make it a revision, is there a way to know what?
Yeah, we can do that, that's not a problem.
Track changes? Just track changes or highlight or something?
Yeah, that's not a problem, no. Brian, did, Megan?
I know you had said that Dr. Gates was with us, but I just really, really, really wanted to thank her. She digital, digitalized everything and made it very user-friendly and she was working very, very hard at getting all this done, so a big shout out and big thank you to her for that.
And Mr. Chair, I was gonna do that at the conclusion after the vote, but Dr. Gates did a yeoman's work on this and really has basically digitized the entire policy handbook at this point, to the point where it's, it's much more workable than the MASC version and we're working together and she's doing, like I said, yeoman's work on working with Ann Gagnon in my office to go through all these policies where things have changed and we noticed a few things, for example, the mission of the school system. We always have a policy on mission, but the mission has changed and the school committee has approved that, so that was just a vote tonight to approve those changes. So really congratulate, thank you very much to Dr. Gates, who's home with her husband tonight, who was away on a trip, so I excused her for the meeting. I wanted to come here and embarrass her, but she's home with her husband, so. Probably is. Hi, Dr. Gates.
Any further comments?
Hearing none, all those in favor of the first reading of the policies is listed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And I had, and I should've brought it, I should've went to the policy meeting, I didn't get a chance to get to it, 'cause I was gonna ask a question regarding, we do not have a policy regarding the giving of diplomas. We allow under contract, certain members of our employment get to give their contract, get their diplomas to their children. But I'd love there to be some, maybe if there is a policy regarding retired principals or superintendents who could, who could request to the school committee that they can give their diplomas to their child, even if they were to retire, if their kids were going through the, I was just thinking about it and.
No, 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 that's, we can, we can definitely.
We can, we can definitely look at that.
Yeah, I don't know if there is one.
I don't know, yeah.
We don't have one now, but.
But just so everyone knows, I know, for instance, because I checked with Paul, we had, for example, a, a member of the school committee who had left the school committee. And Paul had allowed them to give the diploma to their child. So I think that there are pieces like that. And so I also note that it's not just faculty at the high school, people have given.
But, but, Mr. Chair, there's also been a line that's been held also with, with folks who want an older brother in the military to provide the diploma and things like that. And, and Mr. Brandigan has held a line with regard to that. So somebody else who works in another town department or, you know, we've basically sort of respected that, the sort of the sanctity of the school committee and the school committee's wishes when it's come to that. So I, I agree with Mr. Mr. Jimononi that maybe perhaps there is a policy out there that the MASC has developed with regard to, because I can, I can imagine it being something that's coming in the body, come up in the body politic of, of many a town or city.
I know it has since I've been on this board. I, I know that there's been requests and it's not, you know, it's, it becomes nieces and nephews and, and it, that isn't, it was always your, your children, or if you were the primary caregiver of that child.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. I would probably say that we'll have, we would have a bigger conversation with Paul, too.
Absolutely.
Because that would make sense. No, that's fine, we can take a look at that. One thing I want to bring to you, so we have taken care of most of the, under other, we want to thank Mr. and Mrs. McKern, McKern, what? McKern, sorry, for giving a donation to outstanding school lunch accounts. I just want to point out to people that we had a discussion at our agenda meeting. We have had some very generous donations from people who have given to the lunch accounts. I just asked, and we're going to have a follow-up with the school committee, as how, how big that issue is with us. Because I don't think we have any idea how much we're, you know, people are paying. But I will also add that, in addition to that, since we had our conversation, there was a school in Rhode Island that actually hired a debt collector to pick up theirs. But, you know, I think we all look upon it as, wow, that's, that's kind of crazy. But they're a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the hole because of their lunches. So that's, that's what, I mean, I don't think we're anywhere near there and we've had a lot of generosity. But I'm interested to see how big a problem that is.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is something that. This was something that when we, when I first started on this board, we had Chartwells in the school district. And Chartwells ran a pretty tight ship. And I'll never forget, one of my favorite people I ever met was Pam at the high school. I want to cry thinking about it because she said to me one day, she goes, "If a child came to you and didn't have the money to pay for that meal, what would you do?" I said, "Let the kid go, let him have his food and eat." And she said, "Well, I was told to make the kid throw it away in the rubbish right in front of all the other kids." And that was the last I thought of ever having Chartwells in my district. And we brought Rebecca in, Rebecca Bagnell, who's in charge of it. She has looked at this and has brought that information to us in the past of what the numbers are. But I, and we have, we have a policy on what we do and we have a situation where kids don't have money in their account. But also to make sure that if there's a reason why that child isn't getting a meal, we've got to make sure that child gets a meal no matter what. And Rebecca handles that, and she handles a lot of situations like that, very privately.
Were those misuse addressed? But if it's a student in need, it's, it's always.
Rebecca's trying to add that number.
Anything else before we move on? I do want to mention two things of personal nature, the first being that this week, the town lost Joe Friedus. Joe has been an outstanding individual to our community and has served Middleborough in a variety of capacities. I believe his wife was a longtime teacher here.
Longtime.
And we do wish the best for the Friedus family for losing Joe. And the second, I would be remiss, especially at the holiday time, not to point out that, I know I, I speak for both Brian, the two Bryans, how much we miss Terry Page. The holiday time was always special for us with Mrs. Page. And for some reason, the holiday time brings back the many phone calls I've had over the years with Terry. And this is sadly our second holiday season without Terry, but I do want her family to know how much she has missed, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I've been channeling Cherry, Terry on some Monday nights in the past month and a half, so she's been with us.
We'd like to say happy holidays to everybody in the Middleborough community. With that, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn with the understanding that our next meeting will be January tenth.
So moved.
Do your second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody.